Well, good morning, everybody. Hopefully, everybody is staying safe and being healthy and doing everything you can. We are here live. We have a decent amount of attendees so far, and this will continue to go on. If you want to ask a question, please click Raise the Hand button in the Control Panel. It is under the red arrow. We'll call on you, and you will need to unmute your mic at that time. But good morning. We just wanted to start out by thanking everybody for participating. This is an interesting time for all of us. We are trying to figure out how to operate in this new normal. Hopefully, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and we are starting to head towards the point to where we can reopen or start a gradual reopening. But what this has done to the economic situation of Ohio is, I would say, nothing short of devastating. We are anticipating that revenues are going to continue to be off substantially. And for those in the counties who have a very high sales tax, you're seeing it and starting to see it. We anticipate state revenues are going to be down close to 20%. Your revenues are probably going to be close to that on the downside. And so you need to do a number of things. Most of you are on a calendar year, fiscal year. You're not like the state that ends in July. But to the extent that you're on a calendar year, you're going to have a few more months to weather this storm. But certainly now, you're anticipating dipping into your carryforward sums to offset some of that. You're also starting to make adjustments and anticipate that. Here in the Auditor's Office, for example, we have reduced our remaining fiscal year GRF spending by 20%. We anticipate that being a good start. We think the next calendar year is going to be also very tough. Our next fiscal year is going to be very tough for us as we go forward. So that's going to be an interesting time for us to start having discussions about services. In the short term, for our operations, you all know that our people are still out there doing audits. Fortunately, 600 of our 800 people were able to operate remotely, and so it was relatively seamless in the uptick. So from that perspective, our operations are still going on. If you have one of our auditor teams out there, they should still be doing their job a bit at home instead of on your location. We really envision these more as a discussion and less as a lecture. So I want to go ahead and start out by thanking your Governor Affairs team and your association for helping organize this. Certainly Cheryl has been a rock star, but she's been a rock star for years. And the rest of your team. And so we want to continue to move forward. We want to go ahead and open up this to questions, and we'll hit a lot of this as we go forward with questions. So what's on your mind? What are you seeing? How do we continue to work together? What we really wanted to do is kind of be the canary in the coalmine, making sure you're all planning and anticipating what is going to be a very trying time for local governments and candidly, the state of Ohio. So with that, we're going to open it up first. Dave Walters. Dave is there from Mercer County. I think he's our first. First one with a question. Okay. So we want to go forward and move forward. What? So the first question is, what changes are being implemented regarding personnel in the audit process? That's a written question for us. Well, short answer is, in the audit process, our personnel are still doing their jobs. 600 of our 800 people worked remotely before this, and all 800 are working remotely now in some capacity. Our staff is still the same. We are continuing to do audits. There are times when we are calling ahead and saying, hey, can you pull these records for us, put them in a conference room? We'll come get them in a couple of days, and then we'll let the records sit for a couple of days to hopefully purify them and then do our job going through them. But for the most part, our audits are going on. We've had very few customers that have asked us to delay or postpone an audit. You know, they need to be done. They still need to be done on time. The big thing for us is we are looking at entities, particularly some of the smaller villages and townships, doing more AUPs, which are agreed-upon procedure audits, to try and keep their costs low. So we're rolling those in a little heavier. And so from that perspective, that's what we're doing. We're trying to be mindful of your limitations and to do social distancing where we can. So that's really where we're at. If you want to ask a question, please click the Raise the Hand button in the Control Panel. It is under the red arrow. We'll call on you, and when you do that, you'll just need to mute, unmute your mic so that we can hear you on before. So thank you all for participating. Question? A question just came in. Do you have projections with respect to the loss of revenue to the state, counties, townships from sales tax, casino tax, and local government funds? Right now, we're anticipating that the loss is going to be close to 20% just for the months of part of March and April and probably May. And that's for the state. Remember, we are on a fiscal year which ends July 1st, and then we anticipate the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st and runs for the following year, will have at least a similar loss. But it depends on how quickly the economy gets back and going. So those projections are tough. We see, for example, the auto sales tax has taken a real dive. I'm hearing that upwards of 40, 45% of auto sales have essentially not happened. You're seeing reductions in GDP. The numbers we keep hearing are in the 5% to 10% range. And if you're seeing that reduction in GDP, you've got to assume that a larger percentage of purchases are on the things that are sales tax exempt. And that's what you're probably seeing in your local community. People are still buying things that are subject to the sales tax. So you should anticipate a significant reduction. Now casinos, your casino revenue should be almost nonexistent. Remember, we shut the casinos down in the middle of March. They have been continued to be shut down. So you're going to see a dramatic casino revenue reduction. You're also going to see a reduction in your income tax collection, although most of the counties are not going to see much income tax issue. But your entities that have income tax issues are going to get a double whammy. First, remember the April tax collection for the state and for local governments. Normally, April is your biggest tax collection month, upwards of 25% to 30% of your sales tax collection or your income tax collection comes in that time period. That was kicked to July 15th. So for the state, it's going to kick it from one fiscal year to the next, and that's going to be a deferred revenue for many cases. When people aren't working, you're going to see those income tax collections fall as well. And certainly for the state, that's going to be reflected back in the local governments and local government funds, because remember, that's a component of that. So how that adjusts is still an open question, whether the state will just keep and hold the local governments harmless and take the hit, or whether it's going to adjust that local government fund adjustment. So it is interesting, and so we're going to continue to watch that. But we want to make sure everybody's alerted. Those are going to be issues. Now, your real property tax collections, remember, those are deferred by a year. So the real variable there is going to be whether or not people are going to defer those payments. There is a debate going on, the county auditors and around state government, as to whether we should do a wholesale deferral of property tax collections for the summer payment in June or July, depending on where you're at in the cycle. Right now, the consensus, I think, is to allow that to be adjusted on a case-by-case, individual-by-individual basis. Certainly, those entities who have escrowed that, all those homeowners whose payment has been escrowed over the time period, don't really need a deferment, because the banks are holding that money. So why would we continue that? So it needs to be an ongoing discussion. Our office favors a variable approach that says that people who can show that they have a COVID reason for not making the payment be given consideration and maximum flexibility on the deferral, particularly with regard to penalties and interest. But most people who have the ability and/or should pay probably should keep those property tax payment deadlines. But that's the discussion that's going on, and you just need to be aware of that for the property tax side of it. But you know, remember, most property tax valuations are three years out. The chance for adjusting any of those rates as a result of this are very, very, very far down the road. So with that, Jeff Benton, Delaware County is our first one. Jeff, why don't you go ahead and unmute your mic, and welcome to the conference. Great to have you. I know Delaware County is struggling through this just like everybody else. Jeff, are you there?
Keith, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jeff. Thanks.
Okay, great. Yeah, we've been trying to get county-level sales tax information for some time now, because yeah, the state's sales tax was about 8.3%. Sales tax collections for the month of March were about 3% lower than what they projected. But we don't know at the county level how much hours were impacted for the month of March. And we know that the state has the information that they got in early April, obviously, on sales. But we've been trying to get, through various channels, we've been trying to get, you know, the March sales tax information now so we can do better planning. But we're being told we have to wait till June when the distributions are made. And we're just, you know, it's difficult. You know, businesses that are in this crisis know their sales tax numbers right away and their revenue numbers right away. And for us to have to wait three months just adds a level of complexity that we would like to avoid if we can. So I don't know if there's anything you know or could do to expedite the reporting of those numbers. We don't have to have the cash now, but we'd sort of like to know what the numbers are going to be.
We can certainly do a request, James, to the Department of Tax to try and give that county information monthly. Remember, what you saw in March is only going to be a fraction. Remember, there's only about two weeks of March, and a lot of that's still delayed. If it was down, those kind of numbers in March, you need to extrapolate that significantly for what April's going to be. And just reading that from the state perspective, you should anticipate that April's going to be considerably greater than March. And so we'll be happy to contact the Department of Tax and see if we can request that. Again, they tend to do what they want to do on giving that tax data out. But we think it's appropriate that you guys have that information, because we're trying to, look, we don't want any of you in our fiscal watch or fiscal emergency pots. And so that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to, knowing that every, look, you can plan and make adjustments over a greater period of time. Those adjustments are going to be smaller in nature. And so than having to make bigger adjustments over a shorter period of time. We have James Coyne here, who is my Regional Director. He supervises all of our liaisons. Hopefully, all of you know your regional liaison, and you should be reaching out to them. They are working and supposed to be touching base with you. And so that's there. We also have other members of our team here that are participating and taking notes. And certainly, that's the kind of stuff we want from you, is to hear best practices and things you're concerned about. So we will certainly make that request, Jeff, over to the Department of Tax. So thank you for that. If you want to ask a question, click the Raise Your Hand button in the Control Panel. It's under the red arrow. We'll call on you, and when that happens, you'll need to unmute your mic. We also want a discussion of the Auto State's LGS section. We have our local government support unit. Hopefully, most of you know them. They are out there and able to help. If you think you're having a financial difficulty in your county, or if you need help with some planning or some management-type issues, our LGS people are out there. They are working. They are ready to help. We would like to get them involved before you get into a fiscal watch or fiscal emergency situation, because some of those things we can do earlier are just good planning. We also have our performance audit team that's out there to help. If you've got something that you need to look at from efficiency, and it may be as simple as just having a discussion with them about what other best practices they've seen without necessarily even having them coming in and doing a performance audit a part of your county operation. But don't forget, they're there from the approach to save money. And one of the things we've been able to do, because we have the Local Government Audit Assistance Fund, is to spend some of that money doing some of these services that normally we would bill for. We have either been subsidizing those and billing less, or in some cases, all not billing. So it depends on what services are there. So if we can be helpful, make sure you let us know. We next have the Hamilton County Budget Director, Jeff. You have a question? Please unmute and join us with your question. Jeff, are you there? Oops, sorry, it's John. John, I think we had it as Jeff. Sorry, I'm going to have to let my call screener go here. My Deputy Chief of Staff for External Affairs, John from Hamilton County, Budget Director. Unmute, you're go. All right, apparently, we don't have, again, this is new technology that we're all trying to learn from. So when we have some glitches, we apologize. So the question is, any thoughts on extending the sales tax to take out food during the period when restaurants are closed to dine-in business? That is a constitutional question. The sales tax by the Ohio Constitution is limited to things that are not included there. So that's really a question that's been around for a long time and how you make that differentiation. There is a model as to what they do and how they calculate that. And where it's 100% carryout, the Ohio Constitution on sales tax requires that not to be taxed. And so that's going to be the answer to that. That's going to be a question for the Department of Tax. A number of years ago, back when I was in the legislature, we had this debate, and we actually tried to get them to use a model that would allocate based on ratios of historical sales to do those calculations easier than sitting there, you're in, you're out, you're in, you're out. But that's generally the limiting factor there. So other questions? We've had some people join the call. I guess it's video conference. So if you would like to ask a question, hit the Raise Your Hand button in the Control Panel. It's under the red arrow, and we'll call on you, and you'll just need to unmute your One of the questions we have is, what are we doing to remotely? What are our staff doing remotely? And is there things there that could be applied to other entities? The short answer is, our 600 of our 800 people that work for our office are our auditors. They're our field staff. And they have had the capacity to work remotely through, using digital technology. We went to a completely paperless audit work platform that allows them to have that information seamlessly and go through their processes. And that has really helped us with the ability to do audits. There are times when they do need to get documents and records digitized or do a manual look still. When that happens during their audit process, they are contacting your folks and asking to see records. And we're just asking you to pull the records and set them aside, and we'll come get them and take a look at them. So it's really allowed most of our people to do it. But we're doing a lot of video conferencing. We're using the Microsoft Team program as well as the, oh, it's not FaceTime, it's Skype and using that platform. I know other people, I was on with Jobs Ohio yesterday, are using the Zoom platform. There is some security concerns in Zoom, so be careful if you're doing that to know that it's only things that could be subject to that type of activity. So that's essentially what we've been able to do, and hopefully, you're able to see some of your people do those kind of things as well. Our next question is from, oh, it just went away, Jerry. Jerry, you're on. Please unmute and join us. Oh, we lost Jerry. We're having some technology issues here. Hang on a second, Jerry. If you're there, unmute and join us. Jerry, call back in, or you can text.
Keith, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're here.
Keith, this is Commissioner Sereno in Lake County. How are you?
Hey, good. How you doing, Commissioner?
Good, good. Thank you. Thanks for hosting the call. A question for you, Keith. You know, the legislature acted pretty quickly when all of this came down last month, and I'm not sure that they necessarily could have anticipated all of the issues related to this. Are there any other legislative actions that you think, from your perspective, now in dealing with all of the political subdivisions around the state, that you think need to be addressed by the legislature?
There are a few, and if you have ideas, we're certainly working with your association. My ledge team is compiling a list for them when they come back. Hopefully, they come back at the beginning of May, is what I understand is possible. But one of them tweaked that they gave to us at our request. We asked them to give us flexibility to change the type of audit we do on various entities and to do more AUPs instead of full audits, particularly where we thought the risk was appropriate and the financial circumstances justified it. The provision that they gave us really only applied for periods covering the coronavirus. Well, you know, most of us, we do our audits and arrears. And so the audit period that is covered by the coronavirus won't be audited for at least a year and a half. Hopefully, we're out of the coronavirus time. So we're going to have them change that. We wanted to be able to go into doing the audits now, or the audits that we're setting up to do now, which by the very nature would cover a period over the last year and not a coronavirus period to do some cheaper, more risk-based audits. And so we're going to ask for that fix. Another one we're going to ask for, we asked for it before, but it didn't get in. I know we worked with your association, some of the others, to give you some flexibility similar to that that the state and most of our school districts have with regard to staff relief and to give you flexibility on how to determine your work conditions and your compensation for your staff. There is a pretty clearly public policy and rule that says you can't pay people for not working. Well, the state has an exemption to that. It's the administrative leave provisions. There's some question as to how clearly that applies when you decide to have somebody at home for the safety of your community or the safety of your operation, but you want to continue them on your payroll and assign them differential duties. So it's not their traditional duties, you can't track eight hours a day. There's a question as to whether you could pay that. What are you seeing up your way? What are you seeing? What concerns do you guys have? Have you got a list that we could help support with our ledge team as well to get on that list that comes back?
Well, thanks for asking. I think, you know, we're clearly going to work through CCAO to sort of represent what we think are needs that are being seen throughout the 88 counties. But from an economic standpoint, we are just seeing what most dense population counties are seeing is, you know, our businesses are suffering greatly, and our people are suffering, even though, you know, the assistance that many are getting from the federal government, which is starting to kick in now with the SBA loan distribution starting to happen and unemployment, it's just killing our economy here in Lake County. And we're about 230,000 people. So I think we're somewhere around 12th or 13th in population of all the counties. And we just have to get back. I was very delighted to hear the governor's approach yesterday. We need to get more specificity to what the getting back to business means. And I sure hope that we can measure our getting back to our economy here in weeks and not months, for sure. But we're hurting like virtually every county, I'm sure is.
How have you guys been able to manage your workforce remotely?
Well, we saw this coming, and we got out early, Keith, in front of this, and got our IT department to really begin focusing on working at home strategies. We didn't have to do that much, although they would probably view it as a little more complicated than I'm characterizing it. But we are, you know, allowing as many people as we can. We're trying to keep the county offices operating, you know, particularly our auditor's offices, you would appreciate. And the biggest challenge has been the, probably the recorder's office in terms of the ability to keep transactions happening, title transfers, et cetera, and title searches. That's been under the restrictions that we have of trying to minimize public encounters in our administration building. That's been a big challenge for us. But I think we're working through that, and we plan on loosening up some of those in the very near future.
Well, that's good. That's good. It sounds like you guys are seeing some of the same things that everybody else is. How have you guys, what's your plan if you guys have to do reductions? And I assume you guys had somewhat of a carryforward up there, but what's your plan with regard to short-term, long-term adjustments?
Up until the middle of March, Keith, we were feeling pretty comfortable with our carryforward balance. And of course, that has withered away very quickly here. We are already working through plans and proposals to freeze hiring, certainly, to not replace any departures that we might see unless they're absolutely critical. And we're, you know, going into the budget preparation for next year, believe it or not, at this point in time. And so we're still working through exactly what kind of budget guidance we're going to give all the departments for next year for the general fund. But we will do what we have to do in order to remain financially viable, and we're hoping not to have to cut too deeply, but the numbers will tell us what we need to do.
How are you guys? When you look at public meetings, the legislation that you mentioned early on in the call and the comments about the legislature acting relatively quickly, one of the things that we did get stuck in there was the ability for you guys to do remote meetings.
Yes.
By conference call or by video conference. Have you guys been able to use that? How have those been going?
Actually, we have, and we've now had three streaming meetings. We had one yesterday. The first couple of the meetings, I attended remotely, because I was, you know, my wife and I were trying to stay at home as much as possible. And as it happens, our county administrator was on medical leave, so it really worked out well so he could participate in our meetings. We haven't had any pushback from the public, really. We generally had, you know, 15 or 20 people generally attend our meetings. So that move by the legislature was really outstanding, and it really is helping us get through this and try to protect our larger staff from having to attend the meetings in person.
Well, it was one of the priority items we had and gave to them, and they were, you know, legislature was eager to implement that. And so far, what I'm hearing is it's working pretty well. The key is that giving the community some way to log in or come in to see it. And I think once the technology, we get through the glitches, that's going to be relatively straightforward. And hopefully, this is a technology that we can use even after this, as it makes sense. Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, thank you for supporting that, and it really is making a difference.
Good, good. Anything else in the short term that we can do to help? Let us know.
Thank you very much, Keith.
You've got, most all of you have my cell number. You can certainly reach us and reach our regional reps. That's what we're there for. There have been some new discussions, some new folks that have joined the call. If you want to raise your hand to communicate or participate, just click the Raise Your Hand button. We'll call on you. We'll unmute you when, ask you to unmute your mic when they come in. Our next call, our next question is, has there been a discussion to allow counties to use other funds that are currently restricted where there are surpluses to help subsidize GRF shortfalls? The short answer is, we have adopted a maximum flexibility policy with regard to our audits and public policy. However, many, many of those funds are statutorily limited. We don't have the discretion to give you flexibility on that. One of the things that I think should be on our list to ask the legislature in appropriate circumstances is to give you some flexibility doing what the legislature does are called rotary raids, where you can go into some of those specialized funds as it makes sense and make adjustments. But that's going to take, in most cases, legislative authorization. We don't have flexibility there. Now, in the short term, we can be, we're being, as I said, we're using maximum flexibility, giving you the ability to operate here, particularly where things are getting into a financial stress or financial emergency situation. And here's one of those areas, talking about maximum flexibility. Boards of elections. We sent out a letter with Secretary of State LaRose with regard to paying Board of Election workers. Because that election was such a mess, and there were actually Board of Elections workers who showed up only to be told at 6:30, shut the poll down, nobody's coming to vote, we went ahead and said that as long as the Board of Elections takes voting authority to pay those people who showed up or who prepared to show up or who did electoral worker training, all of those kind of things, that we will review those payments in the ordinary courses being appropriate. Using maximum flexibility, we're giving, it's such a mess that we wanted to give maximum flexibility to take care of those poll workers who were ready, willing, and able to do their job, but only to be called off literally in the minutes before voting was supposed to start. So we want to let you guys know that that's probably happening. We worked with the county prosecutors on the opinions and other things. So that is out there, but we do require that there be a policy adopted authorizing those payments. So make sure that's happening as well. So with regard to that, anybody want to ask a question? Please click the question button, raise your hand button in the control panel. It's under the red arrow. We'll call on you and you'll need to unmute your mic. One other thing that we are concerned about as this moves forward is cybersecurity. Most of you have heard me speak about cybersecurity in the recent past. We continue to be very concerned about cybersecurity. Let's make sure that you're not, even though we have more people working remotely, that we're using VPNs. So we're using the technology out there to keep us safe with regard to cybersecurity. This is, the bad guys are finding every opportunity they can to take advantage of people. Just because we're working remotely doesn't mean that we need to put public dollars more at risk. We know that there's some additional exposure. If you have questions on that, certainly work through your association. CCAO and your insurance consortium has a great cybersecurity resource. And so let's make sure we're still staying safe where you can. Our first next caller is Hank. Hank, feel free to unmute your mic and join us. Are you there? Hank from Erie County. Are you there? Just hit unmute on your mic. You're live. It says you're on. Hank, somebody's going to reach out to you directly. We aren't able to hear you. So we are coming to the end of this. Now, I do want to make sure you all know, we'll do more of these. But we want to make sure two things. One, our first message is, bad times are coming. They're certainly here. They're going to get worse. The revenue picture for sales tax for the month of April is going to be much, much worse than what you saw from the month of March. You should anticipate that the LGF funds are also going to be under stress. To balance between now and July, we think it's extremely likely, depending on what the feds give for assistance, that the governor's going to have to significantly dip into the rainy day fund. It's a good thing we fully funded the rainy day fund and we increased the funding to 8.5%. But the short answer is, we think the governor's going to have to consume over $1 billion of rainy day fund just to balance for this fiscal year. That means that going into the next fiscal year for the state, which starts in July, the governor's going to have very difficult choices to make. And we think some of those choices are likely to include an adjustment of the LGF funds. It's certainly a possibility. We're not saying that's going to happen. The governor and the legislature have that debate. But you certainly need to start contacting your legislators and let them know how important things like the local government audit support fund is. You know, we charge for audits. This is, the audit support fund has allowed us not to raise our audit rates since 2003. And so those rates are going to be important. The other thing is, is we think the good benchmark is a 20% reduction. That is the JRF reduction that the state has made. We were able to participate in making that 20% reduction in our office and our staff. And most other state agencies are doing the same. Going into next year, hopefully, it's not quite so much, but we think that's a good benchmark. Start planning. If you need help from our local government support unit, let us know. We're there to help. If you need help from our performance team, let us know. We're there to help. If you have a specific question that relates to how we're going to treat something with maximum flexibility in the audit, let us know. We are trying to give guidance where we can. We're here to help. We're here to help you weather the storm and get through this. And certainly, part of that for us is continuing to amplify your concerns in the legislature. I have been echoing, as we hear them from your association and commissioners around the state, contacting our legislative leaders and using our ledge shop to help amplify that. That's one of the reasons we were successful in getting the remote meeting authorization in last time. We also think you need some flexibility on paying your staff. And so that's the other thing we think that needs to get in there this time. With that, Lori, we got you in. Lori from Lorraine County. Lori, you're on. Unmute your button and join us.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Great, Lori.
Okay, great. Hey, any chance the counties can get an idea of what we are receiving from internet sales tax?
Internet sales tax. We will make that request. We are... One of the earlier callers asked us to try and get the sales tax numbers quicker than June for you guys in the Department of Tax. And we will certainly communicate that to the Department of Tax and ask that as well. It would be, yeah, the internet sales should be up. But who knows? I just know in my own house, we're buying a lot of stuff off the internet and getting it delivered. So I'm sure we're not alone. It's a great question. We'll ask that question to the Department of Tax. Lori, somebody from our shop will get back with you whether they're going to give us that information or not. Is that fair? Did we lose Lori? Oh, you muted yourself, Lori. Okay, Lori, hopefully, Lorraine is doing all right. We were just actually up there right before we all had to go into sequester. So stay safe, everybody. I want to thank everybody for participating. Certainly, reach out to your regional reps. Our regional reps should be making calls. And thank you, guys, for participating. We have to, we're going to do one of these, I think, with the county treasurers here shortly. And we will continue to keep in touch. Obviously, if you have anything, please call me directly. You can all call your regional reps. We're here to help. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Stay safe and let's get Ohio moving forward again.